In compliance with chapter 231, Public Law 1975, the type of local public meeting. I had a notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the Act proper notice of public meeting was provided, said notice was posted at the Anderson Board of Education offices, mail to the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, the North Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal, mail to the Nutley College Park, advertised in the Nutley Sun and Jackery, posted on the website. This is an official meeting. In consideration of all here present and in recognition of the importance of these proceedings, is requested that all cell phones and pages be turned off or silenced for the duration of the meeting. Captain Pleasant, please.
President, we are the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, and universal, and the Constitution of Justice.
Hold, hold, Mr. Kucic.
This is Dancheck Martin. Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Cota? Dr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Scolera?
Here.
Mrs. Basada? Mrs. Zinstine?
Here. Thank you. I have the approval of minutes, please. Second, someone? Mr. Klein, thank you. Correspondents? Fall a favor of the minutes. Thank you. Correspondents?
We don't have any.
Mr. Lesbick?
Go right in the presentation, sir?
Yes, sir. Fred, you can sit in no seats if you'd like. Wait for your new seat.
There are specific things I continue out as required. To make these presentations, I want to make sure everyone understands. I put everything into this slide that I possibly could. I'm not going to go through every single one of them. I'm going to talk about the themes and talk more about what we're doing based on this data as far as the presentation. But the presentation, as always, will be up on the website for anyone who wants to dig into more specifically a grade level or a certain subpopulation. So just to run through, as an example, we'll do the NJAS three to show what we've done when we're looking. Again, just like, again, this is a continuation of our last presentation. First was secondary, this is our primary. So we're talking about our ASK performance, our state performance data. Nutley's always going to be your first column, our district factor grouping, which is FG again, district factor grouping, districts that are life socioeconomic, and finally the state numbers. Again, if you have to squint, not statistically significant. And what you see again is that we find similar performance again here as we have in the past, but with our state and with the state means annual district factor group. This is our total performance. And what that means is that's everyone overall mathematics. And basically, the way the first part of the presentation is set up is that every one of the slides goes through those pieces. So again, total performance, it's everybody for language arts, fourth grade. And again, you see common trends, both the district factor group and Nutley are outperforming the state mean. But again, if we compare them to some of the higher performing districts at the lower level, we're not seeing the same kinds of color that we saw there in the last presentation. Mathematics, again, yes, we improved, more blue, more green, but so did everybody else. And what we're looking for in these slides, again, why use the color, is that instead of the numbers, it's very easy to start picking up when there's a pattern, or more importantly, when there's a break in the patterns. So these continue, science of fourth grade and then eighth grade. And again, notice, if I had to ask you, do students perform better across the state and language arts and math than science? These are your three charts. The colors show you right away, what's our, where are we struggling the most? Language arts, because it comes very clear very quickly. It's why we try to use these stat columns. It also could be an argument that this could be the easiest assessment that they get in fourth grade. We don't know which, but what we can tell you is that while our performance is exceptionally at fifty, almost fifty percent of our kids need an advanced proficiency, so beyond grade level, at the same time, you have the state at forty-five percent, the same. So again, what we're doing is just why do we compare our data to not just ourselves and districts like us, but to districts across the state, because we want to see how we are truly doing overall. The first portion, again, if I had something to stop at, and I would, total performance all the way through to seventh grade and then eighth grade, those are our ASKs. The next piece of the presentation, if you're looking, drills into what we call subgroup. Instead of our total performance, uh, total population, we're only looking at those students who are not LEP, not special education, those students who don't fall into some of those smaller subgroups. This is our general education population. And as you're going to see, again, similar trends. We perform like our district factor group, which is a little bit better than the state. Language arts, third grade, math, third grade. And you notice, again, now we're outperforming. You can see a huge trend here. We have almost sixty percent of our kids advanced proficient. We're talking about our general education population. But as you noticed, not only did we jump, but so did the state and so our district factor. So again, we're not simply bucking the trend. Fourth grade, similar colors again. And again, we get to science, doing pretty well in science, if you took that as a true indicator. Fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, all stay the same. I don't mean to rush through this, but again, I promise you, if you look through the slides, you're going to see the same pattern. Now, I'm trying to get to the end of the presentation to have more of a conversation with the board about what we're doing. Third part of the, of the presentation, if you go through the slides, specifically our special education population. And as you're going to see here, our special education population is performing as good, if not better than, and again, we're missing some of the advanced proficient, but we're looking for total proficiency. So what you're looking for is as little red as possible when you're measuring how students are performing on or on our grade level. And again, in language arts and in math, we have our advanced proficient and proficient. And again, what you're going to see here in special ed, fourth grade does not follow the same trend. And one of the things that we're finding in our special ed population is it truly is a year-to-year thing. If you look at our fourth grade class, they are different, they're unique to our third grade or our fifth grade. And so performance is changing. What I will tell you overall is, again, if you're looking for trends across the state, we're following the trend given the specific grade level. The other factor about this is that the test changes and students react differently to the content level and the specific assessment. So a lot, a lot of variables here. But again, so we look at special education population all the way through eighth grade, and they're there. And then we focus on the last subpopulation the state focuses on, which is limited English proficiency. And we talked about this a little, but again, if you notice, we want as little red as possible. Trend that we talked about secondary level continues down the elementary, which is that our students overall limited English proficient, outperform their peers in our district factor grouping and across the states. And if, so for the most part, holds true all the way across the board. You notice, I mean, look at this one. In science, again, just for limiting, again, we follow the trend of our total population, which is fifty percent of the kids who are limited English proficient are advanced proficient, with the other fifty percent still falling in proficient range. There wasn't, and there were not any students who fell below. But so again, you'll see this, and again, this is something that we look for, that I want to stop at. Sixth grade language arts, this was an anomaly. This broke our trend. Do you see it immediately? So this is something that we need to sit down and have a conversation about, because again, this is a specific group of students. And what I keep coming back to is we can't look at populations anymore. It's what districts do. And we've been doing it for a long time and nothing has been moving. We really have to start to look at individual students regardless of population, to know if we're meeting Johnny's needs versus Timmy's needs regardless of whether or not they're the same subpopulation. So again, this is something that we started looking at just recently. Again, we only just got these scores, which is why the presentation is landing. So, year-to-year performance. The other piece of the presentation that they gave us, which we put together, is instead of just looking at us last year against those other people, the state, those other groups, what we try to do in the next set of slides is to look at how Nutley has been progressing from 2011 to 2013. So looking at ASK last March, or ASK last spring, going back to spring before that and spring before that. That's what we're looking at here. And again, you see a number of different things, such as, you notice that our special ed population performed similar to or better than, as I showed you before, the state and district factor grouping. And yet, if we just look at our trend, is that getting better or worse?
Worse.
Getting worse. One of the things we have to address, remember, is not just getting worse for us, because this is what we look like over three years, and we look like everyone else. This is what everyone else looks like over three years. So again, the questions are what's happening with our specific students. But more importantly, as the state has been preparing us for the migration to Park, they've been adding Park-like questions, because they've been working with Pearson and the rest, to our ASK assessments. Arguing being that in many instances, the ASK is getting more difficult because we're raising rigor. Well, this is where we start to see when we look across this. If our students were performing like this, and I looked at the first set of data that I showed you, and we were underperforming compared to those first populations, I'd say the state was just us. But if we're following this, the trend of our district factor group, and we're following the trend of our state, and this is the trend that we're seeing over time, it means everyone else is following a similar trend. I have the slides here, though, for everyone. Again, in use of the subpopulations by, possibly migrating. What I wanted to talk about is, we start to look at specific students. If we're going to really make a difference, we have to look at individual students. And it's difficult to do that when you have forty-four hundred of them. One of the things we've done as a board, and what we're starting to do as a district, are we're looking at growth of individual students from year to year. And what we did here was, we took two years' worth of data, the thirteenth and the twelfth, and when we looked at light kids, grades four through eight, again, I'm talking about elementary here, we've already done this with secondary, we had eight-hundred-and-fifty-five kids who took both the ASK in twelve and the ASK in thirteen. Eight-hundred-and-fifty-five consistent students. Of those, in 2012, two-hundred-and-thirty-three of them were partially proficient. We moved sixty-six of those kids from partial proficiency to proficiency, which is about twenty-eight percent. When you look at most districts, and how far you're looking to, how many kids are looking to move a given year, usually looking between three and seven percent of a given category. So twenty-eight percent's extremely high. We didn't stop there, though, because we had, we had more questions. Same idea, but in mathematics. Now I have eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven, one-hundred-and-two are partially proficient, we moved twenty-four, which is about twenty-four percent. So again, smashing that three to seven percent, if we're looking at kids who were partially proficient, in the course of one year, we move them into proficiency or advanced proficiency. We also want to know how, how well are pushing students to higher levels of proficiency than advanced proficient. Out of the eight-hundred-and-fifty-five, again, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five kids were either partially proficient or proficient but not advanced. We moved thirty-four of those kids to advanced proficiency, which is a four percent increase, much more in line with what most districts are looking for in one year, in between that three and seven. Okay, but we still made growth there, moving kids who were not advanced proficient to advanced proficiency in language arts. In math, the change was even greater, we moved thirteen percent of the kids. So at this point in time, most districts stopped and go, we've done a great job. We looked at everything we just talked about was growth, uh, except for the four percent, we're well beyond that three to seven percent range, we must be doing well. We don't stop there. One of the things we've been talking about for a couple of years, we have three levels of questions that we ask when we're looking at data. If we actually look at an entire population from 2012 to 2013, again, light kids, there were two-hundred-and-thirty-three kids who were partially proficient in twelve, and two-hundred-and-thirty-seven, which means we have overall five more kids partially proficient than we did the year before, which is a drop in about two percent of our population. So what we're trying to do is kind of reconcile those numbers. While we're showing movement, what that means is if you look at just those first set of slides, we're moving students up, other students, we're moving down, to the tune of more students move down in this category than we moved down. When we look at mathematics, again, overall proficiency, one-hundred-and-two were partially proficient in twelve, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven in 2013. So all those students who we gained in the first year, we lost, I think it's, we lost seventy-five more students than we gained to partial proficiency in math. And again, part of it is, are we looking at the students as individuals? We just asked the same questions of our advanced proficient. 2012, we had sixty students in language arts, out of that five, that eight-hundred-and-fifty-five, who were advanced proficient, sixty-five. That's true growth. Not only did we move those students up, I talked to you about before, but we ended up with more students advanced proficient than we started, to the tune of about eight percent. In math, though, three-hundred-and-twenty-three to two-hundred-and-eighty-four, which was a decrease in twelve percent of our students who were advanced proficient. So we're trying to figure out, what do we do with this? How do we get to have the individual student? Moving past that, I want to share some of the things, what we have been doing. Going back a couple of years, we instituted an internal ninth grade assessment. Remember that every school is required to test their ninth and tenth graders, but every school does it differently. One of the things we were working on is to make this an internal assessment, which, from which the data, we can take that data and actually use it to predict what's, what's going on with students and actually use it for instructional purposes. In the past, we tested all the kids in the building, the ninth graders and tenth graders dutifully did their best, and then we got very little data back and nothing really changed. In 2012, we called, we gave what we called the Act of the Hespa Prep. I'm using this as an example, but we do this for math and language arts, ninth grade level and the tenth grade level. This is, these are the scores in 2012, okay, of our current seniors. So go back to when they were tenth grade. What we did was we broke it up, for the most part, by destile. Those who scored zero to thirty percent overall in tests, thirty-one to fifty, and then fifty to sixty, sixty to seventy, seventy to eighty, eighty to ninety, and ninety to a hundred. That's the number of students that performed in each of those ranges. Okay, so again, the yellow, oh, it's almost a hundred and, a hundred and eleven, I think it was, a hundred and eleven students scored on that assessment between sixty-one and seventy. Everyone see that middle column? That's what we're talking about. Now, to put it in perspective, I'll give you a pie chart. If, again, that yellow is up to seventy, that's saying that on that assessment that we gave, two-thirds, the red and that yellow, two-thirds of our students without a pass, our assessment. So that's where we are. You see our blue, our green, our yellow, and our red. But we also looked then at last year's HESPA, which is what the 2012 re-Hespa should build up to. Proficiency, a partial proficiency, proficiency, advanced proficiency, this is the number, same kids now. Everything you're looking at now is the same kids. So if we lost kids or gained kids during the course of those two years, they're not here. The only kids in the, in this dataset are the kids who were here for their sophomore year, their junior year, and they're still here for their senior. That's how we scored last year on the HESPA with those specific kids. And to put it more into perspective, there's your pie chart, complete opposite. If you take the red out, the red is the only portion of our population that did not pass the HESPA. So we have, again, going backwards, this chart, our assessment versus this chart, the state's assessment. And what we've been working on, our teachers, is that the standard that we're setting for our students is far more rigorous than the standard at the states. So the question is, how are we using our internal data to get individual kids to make sure that we have higher performance here? We didn't stop there with the data. The next step was to take it comparatively. Scores are on 2012 Hespa, the Hespa Prep I talked about, versus the thirteenth round. We actually combined those two. So if you're looking across the bottom again, you have those same categories we use for our tests. Students who scored thirty or below are in here. Of the students who scored thirty and below, red still being partially proficient, green being proficient, and blue being advanced proficient. Fifty percent of them were proficient, fifty percent were partially, none of them were advanced proficient. That's what this chart means. It shows you how the students who were performing in this column on our assessment performed on the state test. And as you can see, if you passed our test, you have seventy or above, look at the amount of blue. So if you're doing well on our internal assessments, you're doing extremely well on HESPA. The issue, though, is, two-thirds of our kids, over two-thirds of our kids fell here. What we've been working out as a staff slowly, is a matter of two-thirds of our kids fell there. So it's not, again, teach us the state test, it's not chase park. It's make sure that the kids are learning what we expect them to learn based on our curriculum and our internal assessments. So are we using those internal assessments to get to individual kids and move them through our curriculum, whether they're special ed, limited English proficient, general ed doesn't matter, male, female, middle school, elementary, high school? What we're starting to see with this progressive analysis is that if they're doing well on our assessments, they do well on the other assessments. The big question, as we've looked at some of the secondary data, is our ACT, our SAT, is that true for there as well? We started to import that data now, and we're starting to do that same kind of analysis using our internal assessments. We didn't stop there, though. Last piece. Those assessments are wonderful, but what about the grades the students are receiving? Because what's motivating the kid overall is reflected in the overall grade, not one assessment they took in March when we stopped everything. So, again, colors. Don't bomb all its up. Red, orange, yellow, green, and blue, F, D, C, B, A. What grades did the kids get as they performed on our overall assessment? So if our assessment's written based on the content that's expected of a sophomore or junior or freshman to have mastered, known to be able to do, what grades are they getting? Well, as you can see all the way, anybody who scored ninety-one or above in our assessment, every single person was blue, advanced proficient, received an A, sorry. Every single one of those kids received an A. You'll notice, though, that kids who scored between fifty and sixty, if yellow technically sees still passing, three-quarters of the kids who did not pass, passed, got a passing grade. So part of the question that we started asking is, what is this assessment telling us if we're telling these kids got As and they couldn't get a passing grade on one assessment that's supposed to tell us how they're doing overall? So these are the questions that we're asking now, because we want to make sure this is the conversation at high school. If we're telling kids throughout the year, they're getting these grades, no wonder they're surprised when they get these scores. And that's what we're pushing toward. The idea that these students here are getting As and look how they're scoring overall, that should make sense in the student set. But if you're telling them what you're doing is giving you an A or a B, why would you think to do anything differently? Why would parents then be concerned, maybe I need to talk to the teacher, or really rev up the homework, or worry about what's going on at school, and I'm coming home with the greens and the blues, only to score between thirty-one and fifty on an overall assessment? So we really have to kind of make sure that all of our data pieces are aligned, so students understand exactly where they are. Same issue with the grade point, the grade scale, how we develop our grade point averages. We had a lot of people come to us a year and a half ago and say, well, if I only know. Well, this is why we're looking at this data, try and make sure we're focusing on individual students, and all of the data pieces that we're giving to students line up. Because there's no reason you should get As in class, and then a thirty on an internal assessment, a partial proficiency on a state assessment, and a far below the mean score on SAT. So this is the kind of stuff we're doing in Performance Matters, again, to the board. With our student growth objectives being forced us from the state, we've taken that as an opportunity, to really leverage Performance Matters, the tool that we're going in. Our key, though, is this year to make sure we get in as many specific assessments that we control, so we can do this kind of analysis at the teacher level. And by we, I don't mean us, I mean the teachers, every time we give a column assessment, being able to use the data in this way on individual students. So what a student A needs versus student B in every single classroom. If we can do that across the board, dealing with individual students individually, you'll see everyone push to that right side of the chart. That's where we're at. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lesbick.
I just wondered how long that was, because there's a hundred and sixty-six slides, you can make a settlement, and I'll make you record.
They really?
The president.
Now, I just wanted to ask Superintendent Laszlo, was there any cause for alarm, and is there anything that you projected that you didn't expect to see or didn't expect to see? And I'm just curious as to where that takes us as a district in terms of your plan.
Um, we saw improvement, minimal improvement. The biggest thing as far as moving forward, going back to the first part of the slides, we saw a lot of gain. We focused on working with students, moving them up. But we didn't spend a lot of time focused on how we're making sure the students are already able to stay there. So some of the conversations that we have as administrators are, how do we leverage this tool to make sure that not only are students improving, but maintaining? Because if we had just kept half of the students that we lost going down the spectrum, and kept the students that we had going up, we wouldn't be performing well beyond our district factor, well beyond. So it's a matter of not just, it seems like certain things that we targeted last year were working, but we have to kind of widen our vision. We can't just expect kids because they were proficient last year to remain proficient. So we're really trying to focus again on the individual here.
I had a concern about the, the special ed part that you presented.
Yeah.
Showing that the special ed children were, were doing not only in Nutley, but throughout the state, not doing as well. Do you think it's more because of the, the changing in the regulations coming out of trend?
As far as the testing.
Wouldn't the testing be a problem?
I think the test is going to impact everyone differently. I don't think it contributes just to the test. I, again, I would be more worried if the overall trend in the district factor groups and across the state had done something different than we had done. We probably didn't have that contribute to, we still need, we need to change some of the things we're doing to show different performance. But it seems like everyone pretty much stayed the same. So whatever's changing, whether it's the assessment or some other factor, I don't know, it's impacting everything.
And obviously, we'll get an update on what your research will show on where we're going.
And again, just to Dr. Reed's point as well, and that, these presentations, I hope, start the conversation, keep the conversation going, and share data of our population. Our focus is to make sure the teachers use these tools. Because this isn't really about grading our teachers, that's not what this data is. This data is what do the kids need? And if we put this into their, take their hands on a real-time basis, and again, I think it shows something good, which is that our teachers built that Hespa, that pre-Hespa, they built it, and based on the response of the students by their performance, it's a much more rigorous standard, and our teachers built that. If they do the same thing for their internal assessments that we run throughout our curriculum, and they can get this same kind of information from those assessments throughout the year, the kind of improvement we can show from year to year is, and that's really what we're looking at.
Who's in charge of reviewing the students that increased from partial to proficient?
I made those present, I put the data together, calling out Performance Matters, and ask my share with the idea.
No, in terms of the people that have the trenches.
Oh.
It's maybe it's between, because it's obviously between buildings.
Well, again, just if we focus on this in a positive way, it takes care of the whole SGO issue for our teachers, we don't have to think about it. Which is one of those things where as a district, we're trying to remove a lot of the excess of the extraneous. It's not necessarily committees. Every single principal meets with me using this data. The principals meet with their teachers. The coordination, all meet with Ms. Valani. We go over this as well. We spend a lot of time in our admin meetings, focused on not just big things, but asking these questions, pulling up a chart like that, special ed chart, digging into individual kids. What performance, what I've never done in a public meeting, but what Performance Matters lets us do as professionals, is truly drill in and see which six kids we're talking about. And then talk to the teachers about those six kids, and what those six kids need and are not getting, because they're not in the group.
Is there, is there a conversation about the hundred and six students that advanced, what they received, whether it was supplemental instruction? Is there a conversation about these are the inventions that were put in place?
It's both. What worked and what wasn't provided to other students who may have either not progressed or fell back. So we're having, asking both of those questions. But we always ask those three levels, how are we progressing versus standard, which is our Hespa in this instance. Ourselves are we progressing, which was that year-to-year chart, and then against ours. And by looking at all three of those, our internal assessments allow us to do that now. Our others would still be ourselves, we'd be teacher looking at teacher, not comparatively, because you can't compare student A and student B that way. But you can ask the question, well, what's working in student A that maybe we didn't try with student B? And that's exactly the conversation we're having, regardless of, you know, special ed subpopulation, limited English proficient, general ed doesn't matter. All right. I'll go fast, sorry. Just want to thank everybody who was involved in the Education Foundation Dinner we had on the nineteenth, the first dinner dinner where we recognized Mrs. Allenwell and Mr. Vetter. It was a great evening, and thanks to all the community members who could be there. Just to reiterate, it's wonderful to be part of a group whose sole purpose is to support the schools. I think we had teachers and administrators there, members of the Board of Education, and alumni and friends, all attended the dinner. So thanks to everyone. Mr. Kazinsky, your wife, Lorraine, perhaps, and Mr. Scolera, all the work that we did. Ms. Dancheck Martin, Mr. Klein, were also there. Ms. Russo was there?
Yes, sir.
Again, superintendent's scores for thirteen, fourteen are on the agenda, as well as, I've spoken with the executive superintendent on the data presented here as far as last year's superintendent's scores. That's why they're both appearing on the agenda. Helped by DC met last Tuesday. We're still working with our skips, and we're kind of outlining the plan. Again, our first full prep with update coming up that we haven't had until October eleventh. So we're in the planning phase to make sure, again, most of that conversation between mandatory trainings from the state and exactly what we're talking about now, leveraging this tool. Mentor mentee meetings, thanks to Ms. Valani, Ms. Christian Teller, you're working triple duty, the same day. Mentors and mentees met to go through the process and kind of kick off here. Again, we're trying to do everything that we possibly can to ensure our new teachers have every, every reason to succeed here helping the students. Professional development, tier one, tier two trainings, just brief, again, they're continuing. Mathematics, all teachers have begun to use the new program, a key piece of our November fifth professional development day for all teachers, case six, and our math teachers, seven and eight, will be more training on math. And next week, next week, science?
This week.
This week, oh, that was today. Our science training has already begun. Again, we asked our teachers to balance it out with social studies, so that they didn't start teaching science until they had been trained, using our new resources. We're excited at the elementary level. That was, again, all, all through this week. Parent information, I can finally, we're able to confirm a date for our literacy consultants. Klein, she'll be coming Thursday after October tenth. We're still working on the time, but she'll be here in the middle school. She'll be coming, was after the phone with her, so. We'll still get it between six-thirty and seven to start here. It's open to anyone. She's coming to work with not just parents, but anyone who's interested in understanding what we're doing in the classroom to the elementary level, and how people outside, especially parents, can kind of work with us to ensure the growth of their children. Our science training has already begun. Again, we asked our teachers to balance it out with social studies so that they didn't start teaching science until they had been trained, using our new resources. We're excited at the elementary level. That was, again, all through this week. Parent information, I can finally, we're able to confirm a date for our literacy consultant's client. She'll be coming Thursday, October 10th. Still working on the time, but will be here in the middle school. She'll be coming, was actually confirmed with her. So we'll still get it between 6:30 and 7:00 to start here. It's open to anyone. She's coming to work with not just parents, but anyone who's interested in understanding what we're doing in the classroom to the elementary level and how people outside, especially parents, can kind of work with us to ensure the growth of their children. Student performances, I do want to thank Ms. Monti, Mr. Riley, and certainly our high school students, they were, they performed at the September 11 tribute in front of town hall. And the students at Jazz Lab participated in the dedication of the Anioke exhibit at the museum on Sunday. So again, thanks to Mr. Mayello and all the students who performed there as well. Happy to report that our bilingual waiver and our NCLB initial piece were all approved by the state. We've gotten those pieces back. High school open house Wednesday night. A Week of Respect begins October 7th through the 11th. We're kicking off that with a blue day, so everyone that staff-wise is encouraged to wear blue shirts on the first Monday, the 7th. Again, we talked about parent information that, and they're coming. Nice event Saturday, October 12th. Other than that, I just want to congratulate one of our teachers, Summer Ann Burns. She's a teacher at Spring Garden in Washington, and she had an exhibit at Paul Rosson Gallery at Radford University in New York. It was called "The Physical City Revealed." I think this is a member from her perspective, she'd been working at it for a while. And again, just that our teachers are doing a lot of great things even beyond the classroom and all that benefits the kids when we bring them back inside. So congratulations to her, and I look forward to kind of celebrating more and more achievements. Great.
Just to inform everyone that we are working on all of the required letters that need, and notices that need to be provided to staff members on the Affordable Care Act and the deadline to supply those notices is October 1st, so they will be going out later this week. Most of them will go out through mass broadcast emails and then hard copies will be provided to any staff who does not have email access. In addition, on tonight's agenda, the board is going to be approving the direct install program offer with PSENG, for both Lincoln and Washington School. Last year, we did this in the high school, Spring Garden, and Radcliffe. The lighting improvements have made a huge difference in those buildings and we are starting to see some of the benefits in terms of the wattage that we are using. The amount of work that PSENG is going to be providing to the district in Washington and Lincoln School combined is about $45,000. And the cost to the district is only $9,000. It's 20% that the district has to share and we have two years to make those payments back to PSENG and it's all done on a interest-free basis. And payback is actually going to happen in less than one year. So from that point forward, it'll be all profit to us and help us to manage that bottom line. This year, the utility costs are very high, so we're trying to look at every single area we can where we can start saving some money. Thank you.
Can you just touch on?
The other items on the finance agenda will be covered by Mr. Klein in the finance committee report.
Speaking of that committee reports, Mr. Pyer?
Yes. Fill in for Jim. Finance committee met on September 17th, discussed various topics. First was the review of our 2007 referendum surplus where we had slotted a significant portion of that money to make a much-needed facility with Paris, including a partial roof replacement at the high school that was replacement of the stair tower doors. Next agenda, shared services involving the township and the school district. It's been accomplished. Then we've discussed shared services all the time. However, we've actually put together a contract regarding our waste removal with the township, resulting in roughly $11,000 per year savings, which is, which is great. The committee requested quotes from other carriers, from our insurance broker, Bob Cerro. And the review of our claims history was done in regards to our JIF. After review of our claims history, significant loss ratio.
I had the right to say that.
Significant loss ratio reveals that our district would not benefit from the board seeking another JIF at the present time. So we're going to remain with that. Reviewing the 2012, 2013 budget, subject to the completion of the order to report, we're on target to make the previously projected deposit to our surplus claims. And I think, you know, it shows that the tenacious work of the business department as well as the sound fiscal management by the district, because we put a lot of things in place in regards to purchasing materials, adding staff. We still have a, you know, a good, it's not a great, but a good chunk of money set aside that we, to build, you know, a great foundation. There's already been conversation about the 2014, 2015 budget as well as we have a schedule that we'll keep to in regards to next year's budget. Final two pieces, payroll, pension, and benefit deductions came to light. Some issues regarding them during the September 15 staff pay period. All these specific situations were addressed and there reportedly no issues currently pending. And then the administration here had a conversation with all the building administrators regarding turning off the lights, turning off the computers at the end of the day in an effort to go green and stay one. So that is, you know, continued efforts to try to make it not be a little greener and richer. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pyer. Mr. Schler?
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. I'm going to break it into two because athletics also falls under administration, but we kind of had a great athletic meeting also. So I'm going to start with administration. One of the topics we discussed was communications. And we have a new proposal for handheld wireless communications for all schools. It's really a tremendous system so that all the schools will have their individual channels, will have group channels to talk between the schools. You'll be able to call in from a phone into the radio system. So the superintendent is innovative, Trenton, and there's an emergency event, they can call in and wind up onto the same channel. It's really a tremendous system. It's going to work well in our evacuations of schools so that what happens is these handsets that we're looking for will hop to each other. So if we were evacuating, Radcliffe's alternate evacuation site is the junior high, and they're coming up and over from Church Street or Chestnut Street, whichever way they come over, then we'll have constant communication with them while we're evacuating between school and school. So it's really going to be a great system. We're waiting for the lawyers to do the final review of the proposal. Once this proposal will be advertising it, you know, for bids. We discussed the personnel agenda that you'll see tonight. And I'll just clarify two things on the personnel agenda that we clarified also, which should be on page three and on page five. The last column, you see, it says $162,000 for the internal law entry program not to exceed. That's for the whole program, that's not per person. It was something we discussed and I just thought I'd also clarify it upon the agenda of the year. So that, that's a total, just so that all those people together will not exceed that amount throughout the school year. So I just wanted to clarify that on the personnel agenda. We discussed the board vacancy, that's further on the agenda today. We reviewed Radcliffe School, the new ballots are there, to reach out to Mr. Tucci to see what we can get, the trees planted, where the barrels are, you know, all the different conditions that are involved with that project. We discussed the low-range planning committee and also spoke about the polling locations. You know, we just reiterate that, they're not going to look at that for us, they'll review it before next year, but they're not going to review it in time for the governor's election this year. We also, on our side, separate issue, discuss on the 2013, 2014 budget planning process. You know, and if you go back even two years ago, we would never have been talking about the 13, 14 budget, why we're just really, you know, this far ahead. So it's been very, very good. Policies that are on the agenda tonight. We reviewed superintendent's goals. And that was pretty much all of the administrative committee. I'd like to go into the athletic committee, falls under our committee agenda. So we also had Ms. Pyer attend the administrative meeting to do the sports. We discussed fall sports, season's starting, all of our fall sports. We talked about Bellevue weekend and night football, you know, I don't know if everybody's aware of it, and I have to be honest, I wasn't until Ms. Pyer, so he did better advertisement. But that first weekend was just not football, but all of, we played Bellevue and every single sport category we had for a kickoff of the fall sports. It was received very well, people enjoyed it, they were excited, it kind of made it like a whole new kickoff for the season. I thought Mr. Pyer did a great job on that, it worked out well. Mr. Pyer, we heard us talk about it, excuse me, but we had the Coaches Academy over the summer, three different nights, we talked about the overview, the program, the framework. He's doing a survey, what's called Survey, looking for data in Survey Monkey, and some coaches' concerns that have now been brought back on things we've brought them, we've brought them, you know, new things where we wanted them to go. They also had some concerns for the board and some questions, which we addressed there. Superintendent brought up our homecoming. This Thursday night is the third Half Club U-State Dinner on Thursday night. We're going to, I'll let me go back to the Coaches Academy one second, I apologize. Some things came out of the Coaches Academy and those follow-up meetings with the coaches. You know, we talk about all the time that education, and I always say sports and music all go hand-in-hand. So they had the program, they created a team leaders group and they had a program development committee made up of three teachers, Kevin Smith as the chair of Read Across America, Mike DiPiano, these are all coaches under student leadership, and then Marshallino as the peer-to-peer for tutoring. They have different types of committee goals, team leadership expectations, subcommittee rosters, timelines. But I think some of the most interesting things they've come up with, and I'd really like to jump to the one that Kevin Smith is doing, it's called Read Across America Program, where that comes up every year. All of our students that are in sports will be participating in Read Across America Program. And yellow went for the steer student athlete leadership council and the peer-to-peer tutoring. So if we're having, you know, kids are having trouble. This all came out of the Coaches Academy, the Mr. Pyer ran, then they formed these subcommittees, came up with these topics. And if you can see what this is doing for our students now, not just on the athletic field, but back in education, I think Mr. Pyer is really drawing a complete message. And I will state that I had a separate discussion with Mr. Pyer on that, and said, listen, you've come a lost way the past couple of years because it's Russ Lazovich. And that was the exact words to me, was that it was Russ that's giving this new guidance and where to go and he's really developing that. So I was very excited about that. And we're moving forward on putting up, we never had professional development for coaches as we do for teachers. They put a request in, it'll be something we'll be looking for in next year's budget season and moving things forward. But I thought the meeting was great, I thought Mr. Pyer did a great job and, sorry we're on so long, Mr. Kaczynski, but the two meetings were great meetings and we did accomplish a lot.
I'm sure we all feel the same way with you, that we just can't express it the way we can. Thank you very much. Dr. Lee?
Sure. Thank you, President Kaczynski. I would love to see that synergy. Thank you, Trustee Schler, it's nice to see that we're at least merging the academics with the, with the sports, that's so important. The academic committee met on September 17th and before that meeting was really focused on superintendent's goals. Again, the three quantitative goals that he has set for the district, the one with his two qualitative goals, which we have heard in presentations prior regarding our common language and our common vision. Tonight, we went through the two quantitative goals that were addressed more specifically with our HESPA results. And it was nice to hear, and I think, you know, for those folks who are involved with special education, it was nice to hear Superintendent Lazovic say that our special services students performed as good as not better. I think that dispels a lot of things that we've had in the past. And I think this was something that I came on to the board with in 2010 and we were told by the administrators, these were the kids that were bringing us down. And that's so not the case. And it's a great opportunity and what we've tried to do as a board is to give our superintendent the tools that he needs to make his decisions, to perform instruction and so forth. And as a consequence, just look at what we've been able to leverage with Performance Matters. It's amazing to see what a tool that has been for the district and as we move forward as a district. We also addressed the AP performance and we did that on course-by-course basis. At some point, I know Superintendent Lazovich will describe his method to his madness in terms of addressing that. And that was an issue that I had tried to tackle earlier on with catch and bones. So it was great to see those similar messages transcending right now. And again, this whole premise of not teaching to the test, but indirectly we, so we are. And it's not a bad thing, but just trying to wrap our head around how do we get more kids to take the test series and to ensure that they are actually taking these exams. And it was interesting today, I heard from a parent whose daughter just got her on, from Amazon, her test prep courses, three courses, and she's so excited that vacuumed them out. So at least we're, we're moving full steam ahead on that front. Regarding two grants, which we're going to see tonight on our board agenda, the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the board is applying for $845,000 for the basic allocation, along with an additional $38,000 for the preschool portion of that. In addition, with our Perkins Grant, the Director of Construction and Technology, that will address our vocational and tech education, we're applying for $21,000. And getting back to the IDEA grant that was prepared by our Director of Special Services, Dr. Schipenhause. We also addressed the Nutley Youth Survey, which was introduced to the district in February 2011. And with that survey, essentially, somewhat to what Russ has tried to accomplish on the academic front in terms of addressing our students' social as well as emotional needs in terms of substance abuse, alcohol use, suicidal ideation, anxiety, depression. I think these are all issues that are so paramount that we need to wrap our head around, particularly Lisa Casilla and Joe Capello, who are on the front lines as student assistance coordinators. So there has been discussions in terms of inviting that to our next academic committee meeting to get a better sense of how we're going to leverage and administer that survey. The nice part is that similar to what we saw today in terms of our district factor group and state trends, and a similar thing with our Nutley survey, we call it state as well as national trends, how our, in terms of prescription drug use, we know that's an inherent problem in our district, across the town for that matter. So in the past, we've partnered with the municipal alliance in the civil domain, we're hoping to leverage some of this support from municipal alliance to administer this survey as well. Essentially, that was our discussion for the 17th.
Thank you very much, very confident. Any other discussion, any other committees? We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulation lasts 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes and we ask you to strive, try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wish to speak on a topic had been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one else, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please always remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person come forward, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. President, again, I thank you for asking committee chairman and board secretary for describing some of the things on the agenda because they kind of answer a good number of my questions. Just to confirm if I may on finance resolution number three, the roof repairs for the high school and the doors, that is coming out of referendum money that we still have, is that correct?
Yes.
Do we know how much is coming out and how much would be left after that? Is this going to use up, the million or so we have left over?
The estimated cost of $660,000. So it's about that.
About that. I see on part of the resolution, Mr. President, section four, that, no, section four, actually it wasn't section four. Changed the resolution. Is the amount in our account including this, the money from the state as part of our original budget? You know, we got like 30% of the total budget from the state? Whatever the original referendum was.
You're referring to the debt service?
Yes.
We get a portion of that every single year from the state.
No, I'm not, excuse me, no, I'm talking about the money in the referendum account.
Yes.
We passed a resolution, referendum, but we're going to raise $30 million, which 10 million came from the state. Now, is the money in our account including money we got from the state or is that just money raised from our own bonds?
The entire 38 million was bonded.
Right.
And then the state's share is called debt service and that gets spread out over the life of the bond. So you receive a portion of it every single year. District didn't get $10 million upfront from the state.
I see, okay. So the money in this account then is just out So the money in this account then is just our money, it's not any of this state money?
Correct.
Okay. Do we anticipate getting any state money to match or pay into for the roof repairs and the door repairs?
No, because all of that money was already done when the original bond was processed.
Thank you. I have other questions.
Anyone else wish to address the board? The microphone is yours, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Admin Resolutions one and two are the first and second readings of policies. Mr. President, I was wondering if you could highlight the changes to the policies that are being made in the existing policies.
Page two on there? He's on page five.
Admin Resolutions one and two.
Um, I can't personally, but I'm Mr. Lazovic committee dependent, although I know there were not major changes to any of the policies. Mr. Lazovic can.
All the policies for second reading, there's simply the most of citation changes. All the policies that are up for second reading, second time now, were citation changes. Um, this, this contract, this draft estimate keeps us in line with code, it's code changes and the estimates removed around.
So citation to, to NJAC or statutory?
Exactly, exactly. So those citation changes were reflected both at the end of the document, in the document where those changes need to be made appropriately. As far as inappropriate staff conduct for, policies for first reading, contributions to board members has been underworked for a while, just clarifying exactly what constitutes a contribution to a board member and how contracts may or may not be awarded. Um, the same with political contributions, that language came out of the port that started last year. Um, we've had checked with now two different terms to make sure that we've updated appropriately so it's clear as to what is, what is included as a political contribution and how contracts may or may not be awarded. Early graduation was another, that was simply a citation change, the code change with graduation requirements, we just had a change of citations, not in the actual requirements. Um, and again, inappropriate staff conduct was updated due to some changes in technology reflecting social media and the early internet.
May I, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the changes to the political contribution uh policies, those did not originate from our service that provides us updates on, on things?
No, they came out of a desire to make sure our policies were clear. Uh, we wondered, one of the groups that we checked, what's draft estimate when we pointed out, you had one.
I thank you, Mr. President, I have a, just a few more things.
I think you're still up, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. Admin, admin resolution number three, superintendent's goals. Uh, once those are approved by the SS County Superintendent, are they gonna be put on our websites and the rest of us can see what uh the superintendent's goals are?
Of course, absolutely.
Just wanna make sure. When do you anticipate that happening?
Well, again, number three is the approval of uh successful completion of one of last year's schools. Number four, I apologize if this just went around as we've been there, Mr. Thomas, wasn't we doing the wrong draft? Number four is the actual approval of this year's goals, exact same mindset we used the last two years. Um, as soon as those come back, and again, I would expect a very quick turnaround probably before the next board meeting, if we make that happen.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. And just one minor thing, uh, finance resolution number two, which is the request for use of school buildings. In particular, one caught my attention, it's um on page seven of my agenda. The sixth item down is a, a trunk or treat at the Rat Club School. I was informed last year that a similar event that had been scheduled at Washington School had been canceled because it does not comply with school policy. And I'm wondering, one, is that true? And second, uh, if it is true, why are we allowing it to happen at Rat Club? And it wasn't good enough for Washington last year.
Was it after school?
Yeah, no, it was because it stated emergency, the police.
I don't think that's what he's referring to. Everything was canceled last year, and it was more important to state an emergency.
That's correct, that's why they were all canceled this year. They did, cause what happened was they still wanted to hold it, and they were doing even, I think, not on a non-school day to use it, but we stayed it because of state emergency, which the chief didn't want it done, so it actually moved to somebody's parking lot.
It's similar with the Halloween parade.
Yeah, all those were canceled due to the storm, and that's why, but there's no reason they can't be scheduled this year, there's no storm.
Right, they're not scheduled on school yet. So we all have, we're not scheduled on school day, so we don't have students either come or go from school.
I see, okay.
The quarterback school last year was also canceled, they have their one on their own all site, uh, that wasn't on school day.
So are all the schools gonna be permitted then to do the same thing?
Well, not really, all of these really have the ability to do what they're doing on a non-school day, deserves the property, you know, but.
Thank you, Mr. President. Were there any other resolutions I got put out? I don't have.
Mr. Reed, will you take the academic travel motion, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I make a motion to move back to the board, we want through six, eight, nine, ten.
Second. Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Number three, I'm missing number four.
Sorry?
Number three on academic.
Yes. You should have been one through. Good morning. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Kaczynski, will you take administration resolutions one through four?
Yes, Mr. Kaczynski, I move some resolutions, assembly. Administration resolutions, well, back in the old ways. Administration resolutions, one through three is.
One through four. One through four. Would you say the actual resolution?
Four now.
Sorry. Do I have a second discussion, please? Any discussion? Mr. Reed?
Yes, uh, regarding um admin resolution number two, approval adoption of policies, first reading sixty-three, sixty-two, how, I didn't see this in terms of the policy in terms of what was stipulated, but how would the administration ensure or monitor that? Would it be easier for the administration to require that all board members disclose political contributions? To give that policy some teeth, that's really the bottom line, I think.
Well, I just, the, the judge said the change in policy requires anyone applying for a contract to provide disclosure of it. We always followed that as part of a protocol, which would be stating clearly in the policy now. This one, anyone who's applying for a contract has to give us accurate access.
But in terms of board members disclosing their.
Board members now aware of it should also let us know if this is an issue of eligibility. If it doesn't say anything in the policy, they have to start giving up overdraft. It's really, it's continued to pop now.
Whatever comes up our.
The actual person applying or currently applying for a contract.
The president's backtracking on what happened with our insurance piece, so I understand that's why that's here, but to avoid any type of mishap in the future. Cause that led to a lot of litigation.
The Trump administration, take the moonboard clarity into the social.
Exactly, cause anyone who's down last two blocks is a difficult.
It's a costly mistake, and I appreciate that.
And this was brought forward by our board members, I don't know.
Absolutely.
Thank you, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Klein, will you take finance resolutions, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I mean, the finance resolutions one through ten is ready. Second.
Second, Mr. Kaczynski, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Klein, will you take financial resolutions, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I mean, the finance resolutions one through ten is ready. Second.
Second, Mr. Kaczynski, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Russo, will you take personal resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move personal resolution number one is listed.
I have a second. Discussion? There is a title on page, the first page of the uh personal agenda report with each person's name, the bottom line, it should be nine, one, two thousand and thirteen. May I?
Termination date.
Termination date.
Last one on the first page.
First page, last person. Um. Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. At this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Other regulations? Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these conversations. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within these requirements. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. Anyone else to come forward?
Hello? Thank you, Mr. President, Alan Thomas, one zero eight McKinley Street. Uh, Mr. President, I was um, once again, in awe of the presentation by our superintendent and on our performance reports here. Um, he's been with us for what, a little over two years now, and already we're getting data that uh the district always had available, but was never compiled, never distributed, never shared, and sometimes just downright denied that they had it. And um, uh, as someone who stood at this microphone for fifteen years, saying, let's look at the data, and being told, no, we don't have to, we have one of the best school districts in the state, it is a, a source of great comfort for me to know that we have the leadership of the superintendent who will use the data, that we have leadership of our board of education, who not only supports the superintendent in these efforts, but sits here and sometimes listens with not too much awe uh at what the numbers actually tell Having said that, I now would like to take the next step. Now we have the data, I mean, now we see it. We've often heard uh superintendents say, we're now gonna be able to focus on the individual. And I would like to know a little bit more about what that means. And I don't wanna speculate here, cause I have just as wide imagination, I suppose, as anybody, but I'm wondering what does that mean? How are we gonna focus on the individual and who is gonna be responsible for that focus? I realize the superintendent is ultimately responsible, but I mean, on a day-to-day basis, who's gonna be responsible for doing whatever is necessary to focus on the individual?
I would have to answer, but it doesn't make sense. Lazovic is certainly capable to make the answer.
Well, I mean, there would be more, I think, we'd forward to be more public presentations on what we're doing, without the touch of the rest, but I, I mean, the people that are responsible, the people that have always been responsible, and they have been responsible, they've been caring for our kids the entire time, we're our teachers and our administrators. All we're talking about is giving them more tools to continue doing what they're, what they've been trying to do from the beginning. Uh, a lot of what we've been doing, and thank you again for your statement, a lot of it's come from the teachers, they've said they need these things, they need your resources, how do we have to leverage technology, better, we need more technology. Um, we're in many ways just listening to people on the front lines about what they need. As far as who is responsible, the same people always were, the same people in their classrooms that are trusting our kids, we just wanna make them more effective in the sense that they've been asking for tools, we're trying to give them. The same way a doctor would assess a patient, we're supposed to be assessing the students on a regular basis, and you're locked into only taking that data a certain distance in helping kids based on the tools you do or do not have. And you can see the power of some of the tools that we run in the district, that once the teachers understand how to leverage, um, they're gonna make, you know, do wonderful things for kids.
I, I think, I, and again, I think Dr. Reed said pretty clearly before, the, the teachers, the same people are here, Mr. Thomas, I mean, there's, as you know, the teachers are more than capable. Now we feel that we have a, a, a board that's taking us in the right direction, certainly a superintendent that is steering the ship with the same, the same people on board. It's been a plus for the whole district. I, I think it's, uh, as you mentioned before, it was, um, it was good that we, uh, we were able to find Mr. Lazovic, and, and having that person there leading the, the charge is what we've been looking for, with the same people.
Well, then, Mr. President, I feel compelled to ask, you know, I don't disagree with anything you just said, but I feel compelled to ask, because another illusion was we're gonna see more movement to the right of the charts. What's our timeframe, what's our objective in seeing that movement? And when will we, will we sit together here in four years and look at this year's charts and be able to see the clear movement, or is it gonna be in one year, is it gonna take ten years? What's our plan?
I think we've seen some movement already, and, and we all feel the same way. I think uh, Mr. Lazovic does, has a calculated time on how he wants to do this. We all like to move a little faster, I would think, but I, I'm sure he has an agenda on what he thinks we might be all moving to the right.
Is the board providing superintendent with the resources necessary to do it as quickly as possible before more people move out of this town?
As much as it's officially responsible, I think we are. Support-wise, without a doubt. Financially, it's, it's a struggle.
Thank you, Mr. President, for.
But he can probably answer for you if I can.
No, that's it, absolutely. We need great support from the board of, 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 of finance.
Just one more thing for me, one of the, you, Mr. Lazovic, you pointed out the, the difference in the charts between the students who, shall we say, took all the tests within our district from grades, I think it was fourth grade it was, versus the total population. And I, but you didn't seem to think you knew an explanation for that, or if you did, I missed it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, an explanation for which?
Or why they're so different. No, it's people that, as I recall, you're saying that we had uh one set of data for the same students from fourth through eighth, and we could see they jumped.
Oh.
They were more proficient, more.
I didn't make any, when I, when I was talking about that, I didn't make any comments on any of the other students we don't have. What I was saying is I wanna make sure I understood it as clean data. We're not looking at two different groups of students, when we make those comparisons, we're looking at the same group of students over time. So when we look at eight hundred and fifty-seven, you say, well, we should have more test scores, well, we do. But certain students leave us and new students come. Those students aren't reflecting that year-to-year now.
Okay.
Because they weren't, they weren't impacted by our teachers, that's what goes through the.
Okay, but when we saw the number of people go down in those categories, what explains that? Is that the new kids?
Do you overall, are you talking about?
Yes.
Again, if, if you're talking about the number of students that we've lost, that's not, there are no new students in that. What explains that is possibly a, a serious focus on moving kids up and not maintaining, um, but also get, we are not organizing the district in the classroom. We're asking teachers if we do want to do a lot, it's gonna take a little bit of time and there's still waiting. I want to see, I, I promise you, I want to see things move faster than everyone else in the room. At the same time, we're realistic, we're people working extremely hard, and we're asking elementary teachers alone to learn four new things at the same time. Um, our middle school and our high school are, are indeed in, in growth, worth the building. Um, what I would ask from the community is to kind of stabilize through our strategic plans, it's a five-year plan. We should start to see results all over the board. I mean, I think if you ask parents, I've already got phone calls and email from parents who are thrilled because your kids are picking up more books in classes. That's a threat to start. Um, and that's something that's different, that's because the board really took a different approach, as Mr. Kaczynski said before, approaching the budget, what we're, we're putting our money. That's the teachers, you know, sometimes volunteering their own time and certainly engaging in professional development and really taking ownership of the new resources they've been asking for for a long time. That's new technology coming in the classroom, all these things that are changing, you will see an impact, but again, it's unfortunate, it's turning a big chip, it takes some time. But again, if you're looking for a timeline, um, I mean, if you can stabilize through our, through our four strategic plans, it's a five-year plan, one year, two, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have other questions, though. Anyone else?
Kimberly Donahue, twenty-seven Raymond Avenue. Board members all know me, I have three children in the school district. Board members all know me, I have three children in the school district. My typical ed kids, if you will, my sixth grader and my ninth grader, you know, held their own on the NJASK scores and everything, it was great. But when we're looking at why kids are dropping off, et cetera, et cetera, I always look at my son Liam, and you guys know I make no bones about telling you what's going on with Liam, as an example of what I'm hearing also from other parents. Because if we can't talk about our own children, or mentioning other parents' struggles, it's just, it's hard to show the measure of what's going on. Last year's NJASK, Liam was proficient in language arts and advanced proficient in math. Okay? So he, you know, contributed greatly on the math numbers, and all was great. One of the things we really need to look at when we put our children in the special ed, or even the 504 kids in the general ed population in the classroom, is matching up the right aid with the right student leading up to that testing, because that aid is with the person all day long. Last year, Liam had a wonderful person as an aide. I love her as a person. I'm not, I'm not putting her down in any way, but her academic abilities did not match the academics they needed to get out of my son. Right leading up until the testing, she was the one who was with him, and she's the one who's working with him all along, getting ready for the test, working with the teacher. I know what the role of the aide is. A lot of people mistakenly think that the aide is going to be the tutor to the student. And we understand that they're supposed to be the bridge between the student and the teacher. But the truth of the matter is that if the aide is going to be with the student most of the day in all of the academic classes, the aide and the student need to work together academically. And when it's not work that the aide is, I don't even want to say capable of doing, but if the aide isn't academically vested in the same way that the student is, that's going to hurt their scores. And Liam went from advanced proficient to partially proficient in math last year. He had a situation where the aide placement for his math class was off. The whole thing was just off. So, you know, we had these conversations previously about outsourcing with aides, and I know we're past that, but I have to raise something that I've been discussing with Dr. Schiffinhouse, the Special Services Director all along, and that is that while the child might need an aide throughout the entire day, they might not need the same aide for every class throughout the day. And as we're getting ready for, you know, report cards, testing, abilities, training, whatever that student is, whatever their goal is, we really need to think about how we're placing the aide with the student. And it's not just about personality, but it's got to be about the ability of the aide, the ability of the student. And I think that when it comes to the aides, although we do have that, you know, minimum level of proficiency that we need from them, we need to do a better job matching up, because I'm having the same conversations with parents over and over again throughout Nutley, that, you know, some aides are great with littler children, and some aides are great with the older kids. Some enjoy the academics, and some enjoy the nurturing of the first graders. And I think a lot of that comes down to, we need to start having a conversation with the aides about where their strengths lie, and take data on, we're replacing aides if we're going to do all this, because, you know, someone who thought of getting a kindergarten and ends up with my sixth grader, who's in sixth grade math and isn't, wasn't signing up for that challenge, now the challenge that goes to my son becomes even harder, because now you've got two people struggling when it didn't need to be that hard. And forget about the rest of the data, my son's data showed that the match wasn't there. And I had this conversation with several other special ed parents who felt the same way. And I just felt that when we're looking at all of this, the aides play a significant role in where the special ed population is going, and all of your test scores and everything. If we're going to keep them up as well, those aides are just as crucial, those kids, as the student teachers are in the general ed population.
Diane Walton, fifty-three Lakeside Drive, representative of Nutley CPAC. First, I'd like to say, I almost fell over when I saw special ed on the presentation, so thank you very much. And I'd also like to thank the board for actually continuously including special ed in the dialogue that took place tonight. It was so nice to see, and it's kind of what I've been begging for, for the last, I don't know how many years, but it was really nice to see that occur. So thank you. And I may be wrong on this, but we just had a meeting, I work for SPAN, statewide parent advocacy network, and we just had a meeting regarding the New Jersey ASK. And it's my understanding that last year's scores were skewed, because there were a lot of questions that the students were not aware of or pre-taught, let's say, from PARC, from the model curriculum, and Gina, maybe you can add to that. But it's my understanding that if the numbers are skewed, and if for some reason it's negatively impacting the district from two thousand and eleven, it's because they added that information to the two thousand and twelve ASK and HESPA. So I don't know if I'm correct there, but I just wanted to mention that, because some people might think that, you know, they went from an A in class, and now they went to a fifty. Well, if there's a lot of questions that were on there from PARC, that may be a reason why. I don't know if that's true or not.
You want to spread?
Sure, that'd be great, if you had any for that.
First off, over the last few years, the state hasn't been adding more PARC-like questions to the ASK, trying to ratchet up the rigor. But number one, that impacts everyone here. So different students across different districts have been responding differently to that. What's interesting, though, when you bring up the letter grades again, is that what we showed in our assessment versus this current state assessment, even with that PARC, the two thousand and thirteen HESPA included PARC questions, we still had a much more rigorous, much more difficult assessment internally. However, it just kind of highlights the idea that if we're giving As now, and it's not equating to scores, how much worse will it be if we don't make a change when the test gets even harder than we thought? And so we are aware of that. As you can see, we've rewritten our curriculum, matched Common Core. We're trying to put the other content areas as written in language arts Common Core, and our assessments are written, match our curriculum. So if we're doing our jobs, we'll be ready.
Well, that's good to hear. I just, I just, again, wanted to bring that to the attention too, I guess, of parents, because I don't know if they were aware that that was the case. Really quickly, regarding your parent advisory group, I know there's a meeting in two days, you might not have this information, this might be a question for Teresa, but I'm not sure, have the parents been selected? Has a place and a location and a time been determined? Or is that something I should email Teresa about?
I'd email Dr. Schiffinhouse directly.
Okay.
I believe the meeting had been moved, though, to the second?
Okay.
Of October?
Okay.
Thank you. This is on the end. I think there were conflicts in the counter, though I've gotten their conflicts everywhere. We've done that, there's so many. That's what I have.
I just spoke with them today. She's sticking with October second, because every time she sees a date, somebody else has a conflict.
Something else.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Sylvia Haynes, sixteen Coventry Place. My concerns are regarding access to the Singapore Math Program online for the students in elementary school, who still don't have access. There's like, no, there's...
Access to?
Like, online.
Oh, okay.
The online access. And also, another concern I have, I mean, it's week four, the science really hasn't been instated yet. The language arts program hasn't been instated yet. Are teachers still being trained? So they're doing a different method? I guess they're doing just one novel?
Teachers are teaching language arts, they're just, we're still learning...
Right. I'm just wondering when the transition's going to happen?
It's happening now, depending on the teacher, they're working through it. As far as the science, again, we asked the teachers to move up into the training, which took place this week, so moving forward from this week.
So Monday. Monday they'll have it. And what about the access to Singapore Math online?
The access?
The books? We're supposed to be kind of like, you're supposed to have access to...
There's an open component, haven't we?
If we're in the process of uploading information, we're going to implement it so we can broadcast it to all the students.
Okay, so do we know when that's going to happen? Only because, I mean, again, it's like, week four, and I'm still, you know, I want to know the progress of my child, I want to see what they're working on, and it's kind of hard when...
Do we have a date yet?
It's in progress, I'll find out.
We'll find out, we'll get back to you soon. We're something of a date.
And another...
We'll get back to you soon. We do have a date.
Can I bring another question up to you? Again, the concern about the differentiating, and it's in the classroom, you know, we've talked about this before, and I still don't really see that move. You know, it's definitely a different approach to teaching that the teachers, you know, are obviously getting training on, but I'm concerned about, you know, the children aren't switching for math, they're not switching for language arts. You know, how is this differentiating and not just teaching the same, at the same level?
Because they're not switching?
Right. When they used to have like, the high, medium math, you know?
Right, well, again, and we tried to move the elementary schools as we kind of moved away from homogeneous to erogenous. We actually had more students performing at higher levels of efficiency coming out than we had going in for the first time. Do we still need to get that differentiated? Absolutely. We're still learning that. Yeah, we tried, if you doctor just one nation at a time, presumably twenty to twenty-five, I will tell you, the teachers have kind of relative stability in learning, but yes, we need to work on part of the presentation, developing more data so that our teachers have better information with which they can differentiate. Part of it's gaining the resources, and now we're using the resources, part of it's changing models. There is a lot going on, I'm sorry, it's not going...
I mean, my concern is that, I've heard that for like, a couple of years now, and I just want to see it re, I want to see it working, and I don't see it working. And I mean, I have a daughter who has always scored advanced proficient in language arts and math, and this year I got her score, and she was just proficient in language arts. I mean, I'm not happy about that at all. And part of it, I feel, is related to the fact that there's no differentiation in language arts right now, or there wasn't while she was in the elementary school. So, that's a concern for me, a big concern. You know, I don't know what to do about that.
I can tell you that that absolutely is our focus, and for I wouldn't say there isn't any, but again, everyone's having a different experience. I don't know anybody, we've only just started our tier-one training this past year.
Training what?
Language arts. We only just started the tier-one training. We only just got materials, and the teachers can start actually doing that. So we're ready to begin.
I'm concerned that it's going to take like, two, three years to see it really work, and the children that are, right now, within the program are going to miss out.
I would agree that it's going to take some time, we're going to get better every year. As far as missing out, I can tell you that everything that we're doing, I think, is improving things for the kids, so it's better than it was, in that respect. The teachers have more resources, they have more support, that's only going to help the kids that are here at the same. Will we get better every year? And of course, that's the hope, but we're not making it worse for the kids who are at the same time.
Thank you.
Hi, Dikte Mara, fifteen thirteen Coventry Drive. My son attends the Radcliffe Pre-K autism program, and I understand that this year they are taking the specials into the class versus the kids going to the specials, like art, gym, library, and music. This gives them an opportunity to go and get instruction from a different teacher, and, you know, the whole preparation of getting out of the class, going to a new class, is a learning opportunity for them. And I believe this year, that is being taken away, and those specials are being brought to the class, and the head teacher is going to implement those. And I want to understand the reasoning for that, and if there's the consideration to go back to how it was last year.
It's not a human law decision, and I think you've talked to Dr. Schiffinhouse, has this?
I have not.
You haven't emailed?
My friends have, but I haven't got the opportunity. My son was sick today.
I mean, Dr. Schiffinhouse, again, dealing with this on an individual basis, but it's not a human law decision to do anything one way or the other. In many instances, what was going on in the past wasn't a line of ID. So all I can tell you, to answer your question, is that she's making sure she's following, that our teachers are following the ID. There's no, they have to stay in one room, there's no other guarantee to leave. It really is dependent on the students and what's working.
Because it was part of last year's program, we have the opportunity now to amend the ID to get that back? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's not, the ID wouldn't be written appropriately in that way, based on what the individuals do. Is that something we want to wait from last year?
It is, because they were getting up and getting out of their classroom with small windows, and getting an opportunity to go to a new class, and getting instruction from a different person, which is part of their development and part of their learning experience.
And talking to Dr. Schiffinhouse, what she let me know, is that that hasn't gone away, it's just being made on a more individual basis.
I think that needs for the clarification, because our understanding from the teacher at open house is that she will be implementing those in the class.
And that is happening in certain cases, absolutely.
Okay.
Violet, what, and you reached out for Dr. Schiffinhouse, huh?
For other cases, this is something that was just brought to my attention a few hours back.
She's already addressed this with her other parents, so I'm sure...
I can follow up with her.
Absolutely, sure.
Diane Walton really put, the reason why she's concerned is that typically mainstreaming through specials is normally done in school, not only on a preschool level, but on every level, usually elementary, middle, high. It gives them an opportunity to socialize with their non-disabled peers, that's the focus, that's the purpose. That whole piece is pretty big, and that's what I just wanted to mention.
Thanks.
You do have a good point.
Any other citizens wish to be heard? Is there any old business?
Yes, a couple of things in the role business, and I really foundation, as you mentioned, but I wanted to follow up on the, we have one association that was kicked off after there, and it'll be up on our website in the next couple of weeks, but we created an alumni association, and it's now, you can also be a friend of the alumni, because multiple people have helped, they live in town now, have kids here that didn't graduate, so we also, it can be a friend of not the alumni or alumni, the form will just check both and fill out your proper information. But it's really going to be a great program, we're going to get alumni back involved in the town. If you haven't seen it, I'm wearing one tonight, it's trending where it is, but we have a new alumni PIN, if you join the association, friend of, or whatever, you'll have a PIN to start building pride, involved in the community, past alumni in town, access to information, knowing what homecoming is, getting them Rooney Gray online, so they can see what's happening in the district. So I urge everybody, as you're doing those things and you get interested, watch for it on our website, it'll come up soon. Also, I just wanted to mention, I missed on your reports, we had the Music Booster Breakfast this past weekend, went very, very well, quite a few attendees there, board members, commissioners, the principal of high school, Mr. Pyro, again, I have to acknowledge, nine sports, music, academics together, but it was a great program, and I missed those things. I have other things, we'll hit the business.
And the alumni association, for people who don't know about it, is, it's a spinoff of the Educational Foundation, it's the board of that and certain people thinking out of the box on ways to generate more money to help our children. That's just where the money goes, it goes back into helping fund some causes that we don't have to pick up as taxpayers, bringing alumni people in, belonging to the Alumni Association, for twenty dollars a year, you get a copy of the Maroon and Gray email to you, gives you a different idea of what functions are going on in town. We see it as a revenue generator for our children, and Mr. Scler, who has been pushing it quite a bit, we might even see ourselves someday of donating a room in a school, having Mr. Thomas give us a donation, and put a black on the wall, and that'll help the children in the future. And that's what it's all about, yeah. So I appreciate everyone working towards that goal. Any other role business? One thing I wanted to cover on the role business was the, I was able to attend all of the open houses. Unfortunately, I didn't, I didn't spend a lot of time at all the schools, but I did spend some time at the schools, and I have to say to the teachers, to the staff, it was outstanding. There was excitement there, it seemed like with some of the technology that they were using in the rooms, it was just excitement that I hadn't seen. just exciting that I hadn't seen in quite a few years. The open houses were fantastic, they were well-attended, I think they were well, the articulation between the principals, the teachers, and the parents was phenomenal, it was a, it was a nice night. Any other old business? Any new business?
Yes, a couple things.
Whatever you've been drinking tonight, I can't eat for something else.
I've been attending a lot of things, and I'm on a lot of different school committees, so I'd like to make sure we're covering that. New, if you're on Twitter, you want to be following Nutley Arts, @NutleyArts, set up by Mr. Gene Friely, our new director, he is very active on it, it's great. I want to tell you, as we're sitting here, and I wish I was over there, we have Australians here from Australia that are in with our, Mrs. Motley for choir, John...
You didn't talk so much, you could be there.
My elbow, the band director. And I want to state, I want to state that, and a lot of the students and parents seem they're very excited, the news music teacher, Howard, Mrs. Setzer, is a string ensemble person, and we haven't had a string ensemble person work with our kids, they're truly excited, and she is working with the Australian string ensemble, as we're sitting here also. So there's some great things happening in music, sign up, follow it on Twitter. I want to announce, the girls cross country, first time ever, are six and oh up in their season this year on their record, I think they're doing a great job, they should be acknowledged here. Also, if you follow the Nutley AD, Joe Pyro on Twitter, and I've been retweeting a lot of his tweets out, some great things going on on the field, in sports, and as I keep saying, it's education, music, and sports, it's all together. And as well as, so everybody remembers, next week's our first new Fonz meeting of the year, excuse me, music boosters meeting of the year will be on October first.
Thanks. On the new business, the board vacancy was advertised in the Nutley Sun on August the fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. A notice was also made available on the district website. Four individuals applied for the board opening. One applicant dropped out. The board interviewed the remaining three applicants for the open position on September ninth, two thousand and thirteen. I'll now take nominations from the floor for that open position, Mr. Scler.
I'm sorry, I was talking to students.
No, really.
Are you with me for my motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion of all the board members that we interviewed, that Sal Farah is named to be nominated for the full vacancy.
I study that.
There being no further nominations, it is declared that the nominations are closed. Mrs. Kukuzo, please take the book for the board vacancy.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scler?
Yes.
Mr. Spazado?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Congratulations. Mr. Ferro, will you come to the mic, please, and Mr. James up there? Bring your family with you, Sal. Come on, Sal, Julie.
I state that I, and repeat that again, I, I solemnly swear...
I, Sal Maturfarro, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, state that I, do solemnly swear...
I, Sal Maturfarro, do solemnly swear...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualification prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen, quote, four dash one.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen, quote, four dash one.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Perform all duties of that office.
Perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA ten, four, twelve, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed closing executive session at this time to discuss specific matters. Be further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made covered by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. I solemnly...
Second question.
No longer done? No ramble?